Okay, I call this meeting to order at 5:01. And the agenda for the meeting adopted is circulated. Our first item on the minute is delegation, which have Sergeant Kenneth McEckern doing an October-December policy report. You can come forward.
So you guys got my report, I guess? I can see it there, so. So the numbers are similar to last year at this time, which is good. Just shows that.
No, go ahead.
Just so shows that things are staying constant within the community and things aren't getting worse, which is good news. This period, we had 435 calls for services. This is October to December. Last year was 388, so it's up a little bit, but those are mostly just false alarms. You know, people's house, not closing their doors properly, they shift, they pop open with the cold weather and stuff. So if you go through, we got more traffic offenses, so we're getting more enforcement in the area. So these are just our stats, but we also have traffic services working out of the same office in East St. Paul. So I've been directing them into your area as well. They've been doing the school zone, and I told them anything parked on Main Street to write tickets, so they said, yeah, they'll take the plates and just mail them tickets. So they've been enforcing that as well for you guys.
Excellent.
Sorry, where do you mean parked on Main Street?
So you guys were complaining that down by the, now I can't think of the name.
The townhouse across the candle factory.
That people are parking on the street because there's not enough parking, I guess, in that development for visitors or whatever. So, so they're out patrolling there as well. So it's been a huge benefit. We've seen in East St. Paul too, having traffic services in-house with us since they moved from East Selkirk. I don't know if you guys, did I tell you guys about that before, or you guys? So they shut down the East Selkirk traffic office and moved them into the East St. Paul office. So it's better communication between all of us, and it seems to be working very well. More police presence is always good. With that, I get, give you guys the patrol log as well. I know you guys were asking about that last time, I didn't have it handy. So you can see, we have set places on our GPSes, so every time a patrol car goes in that area, it makes a log, right? So we'll download this every three months. Got that up there as well.
We didn't get your report, just so you're aware.
You didn't get it?
No. It's not on our agenda.
It came over the weekend?
Yeah, I know you guys wanted last week, I didn't get a chance to get it.
If that's okay, I can, if Council's agreeable, I can add to the agenda.
Yeah. Yeah, so on there you can see the certain points, and if you guys want more points added to that, we can always add more points. But those are the ones that we sort of came up with, like the sort of the areas where people are driving around the most. And you can see on the report, like we have it for all the RMs, sort of just a handful of spots, just to show that we are doing patrols. Because when the community members turn around and say, hey, we never see the cops, they're never around. Well, look at patrol logs, like we've been in the area like 327 times by Grassmere and certain areas. So if you want other areas, we can add more areas to this as well, and the vehicles will just log it. So it's a nice benefit on our half, because we don't know, we say, yeah, we do patrols. Oh, how much do we really do? We, like, we lose track, right? And we don't know where our members are. So it's a nice tool for us as well, to hold our members accountable on doing extra patrols and stuff.
So the numbers you have up there, are those, what are those numbers? Are those the times you've gone out, or is it the time, tickets, or whatever?
No, that's the time a police car entered and exited that area. So like on the first one, Beckline Road and Tochat Road. So 22 times in the last three months, we've had a car out in that area.
Okay.
Pipeline Road and Primor, 126 times. St. Paul Boulevard, Grassmere, and Highway 9. So the guys are always in that area, they're really busy. By the boat launch, they found down to the boat launch four times. Obviously, not as many times in the winter, because I'm actually surprised it was plowed out there. Like, we went to a collar just now, and we can get down there, so it was kind of nice. But that's the city, right? That's not you guys?
Yeah. That's us.
The boat launch?
The boat launch is the city, but we plow the road.
Oh, you plow the road?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you. We are talking easier today, so. So yeah, so that's just a snapshot of the patrols we've done within this area.
Quick question, just the volume at Grassmere number nine and Grassmere number eight. What is that? Like?
So that's just, so if the member went, like, through that intersection?
Yeah.
It'll log, right? So whether they turn there, and that's where they're going down Grassmere, and they pop up the other side on number eight, that's where it's logging, or if they've just gone straight up number nine or straight up number eight, when they pass that spot.
Oh, okay.
Basically, just a GPS pain.
Yeah. Okay.
And other than that, no big concerns are in. Do you have any questions or concerns?
Go ahead, Counselor Campbell.
So I normally have the wine business right at Addis and Main Street. He called it a few times, I know he's been emailing the CEO, and I'm not sure if he included the mayor or not. Do you, he was getting pretty frustrated, I guess he kept on having break-ins there. Do you, does that jar your memory all that? I think that's the electric business, I can't remember the gentleman's name off the top of my head.
I don't recall that one.
It just, he called, I know he called you guys a few times, and then he had sent numerous emails to us, I was just seeing if anything stuck out. If, you know, that was probably middle of November, end of November, I'm guessing. Do you remember that, Mr. CEO or me?
Yeah. Works in in November.
Yeah, that's, I was just curious if, you know.
I didn't speak to him personally, so.
Yeah, okay. I was just seeing if it was anything that sort of stuck in my memory.
Just on that note, I'm wondering if it's someone in that area, because Riverbend, Fine Ride Auto, which is just another block south of there, right in that timeline, had consistent issues. Every weekend, they would smash out windows on all the cars, scavenging everything. And they always saw pedal bikes, like pedal bike tracks coming and going out of there.
And that was back in November. Yeah, I haven't heard anything recently. You guys haven't brought it to my attention, so I'm not sure if it's still ongoing, or, but I can definitely look into that.
Nope. Okay, thank you very much. So. Next up is Don Fraser from Rockwood Propellant Plant, annual groundwater air monitoring report.
Hi, Councilors. So I'm, Don Fraser, the environmental operations specialist at Magellan, I work at Winnipeg, but I also am up at Rockwood part-time between the two. So with us today, we have Jillian Russ with WSP Goldar, who are the consultants that work on the reports that you'll be, that was forward to you. We also have Marissa Murrell, she's one of the other consultants with WSP Goldar. And then also, we have Warren Rosspad with the Management of Environment and Climate and Parks here, he works on contaminated sites section. And I will pass it over to Jillian to go through the technical details, and we can look at any questions.
Good evening. So we're going to talk today about the groundwater contamination that is present around the Rockwood Propellant Plant, and we'll focus in specifically on the 2021 monitoring report, which is the last one we would have received. But before we get into that one, we'll cover some of the history of the contamination, how we got to this current contaminant management strategy, and what is that management strategy? What are we doing to handle that contamination?
Sorry.
Just, nope, a few technical difficulties here.
Yeah, be ready in a sec.
For sure. So we can keep this relatively informal, we have obviously a slide deck to walk us through, but if you have questions as I'm talking, feel free to put your hand up and just ask a question, because I think it'll make more sense at that stage, rather than looking for the end.
Apologies, I'm just working on the connection here.
Counselor, will you share it with us?
No.
All right, so before we get started on the technical aspects, I just wanted to put up a location map, so we're all talking about the same areas. So if you, is it okay if I stand and point? Is that?
Yeah.
Which one is more helpful for the councilors, if I stand and point out this one here?
It'll be Mr. McGee.
Sorry.
That's just.
Okay, so a few different locations here to point out. We have the City of Winnipeg in the dark gray, and then you know where your RM is located, and that's the bracket in red. Also shown on here is the Magellan property limit, and that's the line that is in pink. And around that area is what's called the Rockwood Sensitive Area. So this is a regulation that was enacted by the province to control the contamination around that area, control wells around that area. So you'll see these different boundaries, shown on some different figures, and so I wanted to put this figure up here to start with, so that we know what the yellow boundary is, the Rockwood Sensitive Area. The pink line is always going to be the Magellan property limit. Go on to the next slide, please. So here, we're going to take you back in time a bit, we're going to go through the history of the Rockwood Propellant Plant and the groundwater contamination associated with it. So the plant was initially established in 1963, and the chlorinated solvents TCE and TCA were used as degreasers, so to clean the parts. TCE and TCA, you also may know them as trichloroethylene and trichloroethylene. They were then, in the 90s, some drinking water sampling was done for the wells at the plant, and it was discovered that these contaminants were present in the drinking water at the plant. And that spurred an investigation to see where to come from and where was it located. So the investigation expanded across the Magellan property, and then went off-site, and ultimately about four kilometers to the east and six kilometers south of the plant. And it was found that the contamination extended that far. There was a lot of community consultation at the time, for long-term residents, you may recall some of it. And the residents were also supplied with bottled water and carbon filters at that time, so that they weren't drinking the contaminated water. In 1992, the treated water pipeline was installed, and I'll show a map of that one, that's in that one slide, which takes us then to 1994, when the groundwater management system was installed to control the migration of that contamination. And at that time, the town was also enacted the Rockwood Sensitive Area Regulation, and that was that yellow boundary that was on the previous map. So since 1994, the groundwater contamination has been managed through the management system, and it is monitored and managed on an annual basis. A few other dates here to bring to your attention, a couple of the wells were replaced in the early 2010s, and then some emerging contaminants, perchlorate and one for dioxine, have also been measured in the groundwater extraction system. Is it going?
Can I ask a good question on that last slide?
For sure.
It says on there, 1992, the treated water pipeline installed.
Yes.
Was that to all the residents that were in the affected area?
It, can we go to just a few more slides along, please? I just want to show a map. Slide 10. We'll come back to these ones, yeah. So this, this is a map showing, again, the Rockwood Sensitive Area in yellow, the Magellan property limit in pink, and then in the cyan blue color there is the extent of the treated water pipeline that was installed. And so if we're looking for the RM boundaries on this one, excuse me, sir, that comes down here, so the treated water pipeline is just on the boundaries of the RM.
So they weren't responsible to treat any of the water for the residents of West St. Paul that are in that contaminated area?
So the contamination didn't extend down into that area, and so they weren't, there wasn't a supply that was needed there.
But you're still checking wells on those properties that, they did show contamination, the ones in West St. Paul?
There is some contamination in West St. Paul, however, the concentrations are below the drinking water levels. And I've got a slide that's coming up that shows the extent there.
Okay.
If we can go back a few slides, please. Back to slide five. Thank you. Sorry. Okay, so a little bit about contaminant properties here. What are these contaminants? So trichloroethylene and trichloroethylene are, they're chlorinated solvents. To see them in their pure phase form, they're non-flamable, colorless liquids, they don't look like very much when you see them. GCE is carcinogenic, and that is the danger, whereas TCA is not known to be carcinogenic to humans. Both solvents have similar properties in that they remain in groundwater for a long period of time, and they also will evaporate into air, and they're also denser than water in the pure phase form. So some of these properties are why they have extended, like why the contamination got to the size that it did, and they also factor into the management of it. The government of Manitoba also has a fact sheet on trichloroethylene, I'll just throw the link in there, and this is distributed annually to the residents in the Rockwood Sensitive Area. Move to the next slide, please. So now we're going to dig into what is the groundwater management strategy, what is being done to handle the contamination? So the system consists of groundwater extraction from three large-scale pumping wells, and these are located on the Magellan property. The water from those wells is treated via airstripping to remove the chlorinated solvents, and then that treatment system, effluent, is discharged to a ditch on the northern end of the Magellan property. System operates seasonally, spring to fall, shuts down in the winter, and restarts again in the spring. It operates under the Environmental Act license. Magellan maintains a preventative maintenance program on the system, keeping a close eye on the condition, so that the system operates well. And then drinking water is also supplied from the treated water pipeline, so that people are not drinking contaminated groundwater. So in cross-section, because many of us, this makes more sense on a visual basis, so what we're looking at here is ground surface, the line at the top, and then there's a layer of soil overlying the bedrock. The plant is shown there, and what's shown in red is meant to represent the contamination. So there's contamination in the soil at the plant property where the contamination occurred, and then it migrated down into the bedrock, and that's where it migrates more easily. And so in the bedrock, that's where the extraction wells are located. So what we're doing is we're pumping the contaminated water from the bedrock, and then bringing it up to surface, treating it, and discharging it to surface water. So just a conceptual, what this looks like.
A quick question for you.
Yes.
What's the efficacy of that, percentage-wise?
For the treatment?
Yeah.
It's highly effective.
Eighty-nine percent?
It's a very, like, 99.9% of the contaminants are removed from the water.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Campbell, you have a question?
So if it's that effective?
The treatment.
The treatment, yes.
Yeah.
Because it seems like the plume, like, it's been spreading, right? So if it's?
It hasn't actually, it's been largely stable for 30 years.
But it's never shrunk?
No. So it's in the nature of these contaminants that what they'll do is they absorb from the bedrock, and then they slowly work their way back into the groundwater, and so you just end up with a really long-term problem, where as much as you pump, the contamination is still stuck to the bedrock. And there's that much of it is there, that you're never going to be able to pump your way out of the problem. You can control it, and that's what we're doing here while managing it, but it's not a, it's not a cleanup, it's a management strategy.
Okay. And what year did they stop using these chemicals?
Ooh. Don't know the history there. I don't think it's in the slides. I have to think back to.
Let's get the full report, though.
I don't think it's in the monitoring report either, actually. No, no. We can look into that.
Yeah, I'll definitely find it, to know that for sure. Usually after you guys recognize the problem where the chemicals continue to be used, they were?
They were definitely not used, like, from 91 on, for sure. I have a feeling they might have even been stopped before that, but I can't be certain of that.
Just so that I am a little more educated on that.
Yep. Take that question away. Okay. Any other questions on the conceptual sketch of the management system? So this slide outlines what we do to monitor the system, so there's certain requirements under the Environmental Act license to monitor. So we keep an eye on what is the flow rate coming out of these wells, how much water is being pumped, what is the quality of the water, both that we're pumping, as well as that we're discharging, what's the surface water quality at the north ditch, how is the groundwater quality changing at different monitoring wells and different private wells in the area that of course we track? Is the system doing anything to change groundwater levels in the area as we're pumping large volumes of water? It is a highly permeable aquifer, and we haven't seen any major influences on that aquifer, but it's something that we track. And then how is groundwater usage changing? We want to make sure that people are not drinking this water, and that groundwater usage is appropriate.
Counselor Campbell, go ahead. Do you know, there's three pumps, do you know how many gallons an hour each one of these pumps are?
On a total, on average, I would have to, I can't remember the slide here, which has, I think it's about three and a half cubic meters per minute of water total that is being pumped, and then last year, we treated 900,000 cubic meters of water. Is there a different unit that you think of load in?
I can convert myself, that's fine, yeah.
So bringing back this slide that we looked at earlier with the treated water pipeline on it, it also shows the groundwater monitoring network, and that's each of those black dots. So within the Rockwood Sensitive Area, the yellow boundary, we have a number of observation wells that are, that were installed to monitor the groundwater quality, as well as the groundwater levels. And then we also monitor the groundwater quality at some of the private wells in the area, to monitor the, the water at different points there. And so each of those black dots is a well that is monitored on an annual basis. So in total, 48 monitoring wells, 31 private wells, one surface water monitoring point at the moment. It evolves slightly here, as we may add some additional private wells, if wells are being installed in areas, we may add another monitoring well to hold up our understanding, but generally that is the monitoring program. And so on an annual basis, this is what the Rockwood Groundwater Management looks like. We're operating the groundwater extraction system from spring to fall, and collecting regular samples of the water quality going into the treatment system, as well as coming out. In the fall, we're out collecting groundwater samples from the monitoring wells, the private wells, the treatment system, and the north ditch, making sure the monitoring wells are in good condition, completing annual well repairs that are necessary. Winter gets us into reporting, and then the report distribution to stakeholders, and in the spring, we do an annual meeting with the regulator to keep them up to date on what's going on. And obviously, they receive the report as well, but we keep a regular contact there. And to the next one, this slide outlines what is this annual monitoring report. So you receive a copy each year, the 2021 report was the last one that you would have seen, and so this report documents the performance of the groundwater management system, provides all the sampling results, outlines what are the planned activities for the next year, and it's prepared in generally Q1, Q2 of the calendar year, and then distributed out to the Manitoba Conservation Environmental Parks, goes to Manitoba Health, Manitoba Agriculture, four different RMs, including West St. Paul, and as well as the Concord Hydroite Colony.
What do they do for water then if they're?
At the colony?
Yeah.
So they're a heavy groundwater user, given their operations. They have shallow wells that are, that they use for their agricultural operations, they also have a very deep well, and that's where the drinking water is sourced from, and so we sample all those wells. Okay, so next few slides are specifically on the 2021 annual monitoring report. We've been talking in general about, this is the system, this is the management strategy, this is the system. So digging into the results from 2021, system startup was May 11th, and then shut down on November 9th. Minimal system downtime, generally operated without too many issues throughout that time period, and we treated about 900,000 cubic meters of water during that period, which is a sizable volume of water. Effluent quality was in compliance with the license, and generally, when we look at the broader plume, the concentrations and the outlines were generally similar to previous years, so no major changes there. Digging into some plume boundaries here, so again, we've got a figure showing the outline of the Rockwood Sensitive Area there in yellow. Magellan Plant Boundary, again, is the line in pink. We have the Treated Water Pipeline there, shown in blue, and there's a few other lines here. So we're showing a, two plume boundaries, and this is for, specifically for TCE or trichloroethylene. The green line there is about five micrograms per liter of TCE, which is the drinking water limit for that particular contaminant. And so that plume extends to the northern part of the Rockwood Sensitive Area, and then down to, just into the boundary of the RM of West St. Paul. And the black line is a little bit larger than the green line, and that is the area between those two is where TCE is probably present, but at concentrations lower than the drinking water limit, but slightly detected above the laboratory detection limits. So that's the difference between the red, sorry, not the red, the green and the black Next slide gets into the details of the RM of West St. Paul, but just before we go to that one, any questions on the broader plume? Okay, let's go into what's going on in the RM of West St. Paul with respect to TCE. So we're zoomed in here, the RM boundaries are at the top and at the side of the slide, and you can see again the Treated Water Pipeline in blue. Green line is the concentrations of TCE above the drinking water limit, and then the black line, concentrations of TCE not detected. So in between there will have some detections. The various dots here are monitoring wells or private wells in the area, and the colors represent the concentrations. Concentrations in the red are going to be above the drinking water limit for TCE, concentrations in green are below, concentrations in, sorry, in orange are detected, but below the drinking water limit. And then the locations in black were not sampled in 2021. Many of these are, actually, most of these in this area are new wells, so there was a permit that was issued for a new well, but the well has not yet been installed, or has haven't been constructed yet. So let's look at the specific detections in the RM. So the first one, the dot in red, is 176A, it's an observation well, and it was recently reinstalled, the concentrations in that well, which is, it's a monitoring well, nobody's drinking this water, are above the drinking water limit, which shows that there is contamination present in that area. The other two detections are private wells, and one of them is 566, and the other one is 581, where 566 is on the southern part of the RM, and 581 further, closer to the northern boundary. And here, there was TCE detected at low concentrations in the water, at concentrations below the drinking water limit. And then a few other locations, private wells, observation wells, nothing detected than the green dots.
Are there any questions?
Yeah, so just for the red ones, the red one and the two orange ones, when, what, how old are those testing wells? Yeah, so just for the red ones, the red one and the two orange ones, what, how old are those testing wells?
176A was just very recently installed. It's just a year or two old.
Yeah, it's in 2021.
Okay, and the orange ones?
And then the orange ones, 566, I believe that was a replacement well?
I think it, yeah, I think it was a new RSA well.
And then 581, I believe, is a more established well that had been there for some time.
And just around those two orange ones, are there any residences in those, or in those wells?
So these are private wells?
Oh, they are, okay.
Yeah. And so we track the groundwater usage at those locations and how the water is being... Sometimes they might have their own private treatment system, whether for iron or softening. And some wells also have a carbon filter.
Okay, and then just the red one, because it's newer, how did that one come about in terms of that location?
So there was a previous observation well that was close to that area and had been decommissioned, I think it had been damaged by some agricultural equipment. So we reinstalled a well in that location, wanting to track the contamination in that area.
Okay.
Are you able to share the depths of, I'm sure you have the depths of each well, especially the one?
We do have the depths. I don't know if we have any images here today. Generally, a lot of wells in this area are relatively shallow, like, or... No, I'm not gonna, we'll look that up and we can circle back to you. Okay, so that was the TCE plume boundary and what was going on here, down here in the RM. The next slide, it's a text-heavy slide, but generally what it's doing is summarizing the private water usage within the Rockwood Sensitive Area. So it generally was pretty consistent, twenty-one versus previous years. We measured TCE at concentrations above the drinking water limit at six private wells. One of those wells, so these wells were not located in the RM, but one of those wells is equipped with a carbon filter to treat that water before it's being used within the residence. And then five of those wells, where there was TCE at concentrations above the drinking water limit, those were agricultural wells over at the colony, so not used for drinking, used for agricultural purposes. And then at eight private wells, similar to previous years, TCE was detected in those wells, but not concentrations above the drinking water limit. And then we had three wells that were newly installed within the Rockwood Sensitive Area in 2021, and no TCE detected in those new wells. And then, because we mentioned the emerging contaminants, 1,4 dioxide and perchlorate, earlier on when we were talking about the history, how these were previously been measured in the groundwater treatment system. So we continue to monitor for the present event of presence of these contaminants, but haven't detected those until the RM of West St. Paul.
Can you tell me what those would be, would that be a byproduct of what was going on at the plant? Or is that just something you monitor for on a regular basis?
That's a good question. So 1,4 dioxide is a solvent stabilizer, and so it was present in some of the stracophormulations of tricloroethylene, generally sort of a few percent. And so it's basically a co-contaminant. And then perchlorate is different. Perchlorate is an explosive, and so is, was a product that was used on Magellan.
Well, none of that.
Not down here, except here, with more in the central area, closer to the plant.
Just going back to the previous slide there, you talked about thirty-two private wells with the carbon filter?
So that was well ID thirty-two, and can you flip back to that one? Yep, so not thirty-two wells, but well ID thirty-two.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Okay.
Nope, that's okay. And we should come back, one more, one or two more slides, I can just slide that one. So, I guess this one probably jumps out to you faster than it does to me.
Yeah, in the pink area, there's kind of, on the right side of the pink area, there's kind of a cross of wells, and it's the red one, or no?
No.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So it should be... Yeah, I'll find it.
It's in the northern part, yeah. We simplified some of these figures just because it presents better on a screen, but have the details there.
Yeah, the two red ones, kind of on the edge of the green, it's the one on the right.
That's the wall number thirty-two?
Yeah.
With the carbon filter?
So it's a private well?
Carbon well.
With concentrations of TCE in the water that's incoming to the house, and then nothing after it goes through the filter.
Okay, and then just my question was, with the carbon filter, how does that, how much of the contaminants are removed because of that?
Everything, yeah, nothing detected after. And we collect a sample before the filter and after the filter to make sure that it's working.
Thank you.
Okay, and the residents are responsible for the carbon filters, or does Magellan supply those at all?
Sorry, Mike Fox still is the business leader?
I was inside, I was waiting to come in or not, so, yes, sorry, please meet you.
Yeah, we'll check the history on that one, and that'll be his question. This final slide just summarizes that this is a monitoring management of groundwater contamination. We've been doing this since the early nineties, and it will continue for the foreseeable future. So the intent is to continue operating the groundwater management system and monitoring its performance as well as the groundwater plume. Obviously, the key part of this is maintaining stakeholder relations and communicating information with people that are affected by the contamination, and part of that is why we're here today. And then as conditions evolve, the contaminant management strategy may evolve. If different contaminants appear, if things change, then the management strategy will adapt. And with that, happy to take any other comments. Thank you for your time.
Yes, the depth of 176A, which was the observation well of an exceedance, is around nineteen meters. We don't have the depths for the private wells, those are installed by the well owners, and so we don't have logs of those in our report.
I believe we got your report November eighth, and it was a three-hundred-page report. And I actually got through a lot of it. So what I established from that report was that the plume is stable, that there was one well, I think, in the Concord Hydroic Colony that had, where you found contaminants, right? One particular well that was...
There's one well that doesn't have contamination.
Oh, one well that doesn't have contamination?
And that's the drinking water well.
Okay. But there weren't, there wasn't really any concern over there that wasn't really growing that. There wasn't any growth in the plume, is my understanding, right? So as far as our, and I'm the previous councillor of the ward with Rushman Road and that area and Miller. My understanding has been that it is under control, that you have it completely under control, and the drinking water is fine in that area. Is that, but is that a good assumption to make at this point?
Are we talking about one particular area?
Yeah, like the Rushman Road, Miller Road, that area.
Can we go back to that?
See that whole, that's the West St. Paul area.
Yeah. And that your plume isn't growing?
No, the plume's largely stable.
Yeah, so our residents should be in good shape.
That's right. And if things change, we will definitely keep everyone informed and adapt our management strategy.
So how often do you take samples, every month?
Samples are collected at least monthly from the treatment system to make sure that that's performing as it should. And then on an annual basis, we are out collecting samples from the observation wells as well as the private wells.
Okay, so you don't have anything on a weekly basis? So I'm just saying, if something went south suddenly, how would you identify that? You would have to wait till the end of the month until you got a sample?
From the extraction laws, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Like those products aren't used anymore at the plant, so, you know, there would be no reason to expect...
It shouldn't be a sudden thing because it's a gradual, what you're saying, it's a gradual release from the bedrock anyways into the groundwater. So you would detect it quickly.
It's all very gradual, the migration as well. Back in 2012, 2013, the wells failed and were replaced. And so the system didn't operate for at least a year, if not longer. And we saw some rebound in the plume, which is kind of a technical term for the concentrations went back up in certain areas. But then they decreased and stabilized again once we started operating the system again.
So is that because the suction from the wells allowed the plume to spread a little more?
I'm not sure if it really spread, but one of them just stayed in a strange shape a bit.
Good, thank you, answered my question.
Thank you for your interest and for your questions.
Thank you.
My next up is Landmark Plan.
I've seen this report, I know I read this report. It was on November eighth.
Yeah.
So I guess we'll carry on until Landmark Plan comes in. And we'll go down to four point five four requests for service over twenty-one.
Mr. Mayor? Yeah, so what we've done is we've, we've got some comparisons of from 2021 to 2022. And 2022's been a much busier year. We had nine hundred and thirty-eight requests for services compared to five hundred and eighty-one the year before. We know that website submission is increased from one sixty to two ninety-nine, and submissions entered from staff has gone from four twenty-one to six thirty-nine. But overall, we're up about sixty percent on requests. And the majority of requests have been, there's been a great increase in Public Works. And 2022 is a year of storms, snowstorms, water storms, and that would account for some of the increases. You know, roads, snow, ice, and sand went from forty-one to one hundred and four. The only, the only thing that went down in Public Works from twenty-one to twenty-two was parks and community grounds and maintenance, so that's, that's good news. But you could attribute most of the increase to the weather. Grass cutting was up, and grass cutting's difficult to get to when it's wet. Weeds were up, and same story there. You know, increase in weeds, it's hard to get in to cut them when it's, when it's wet. So 2022 is the wettest year on record in the province, and high snow. Increases too in the bylaws, so bylaws went from one forty-five to two twenty-nine. Some of the increases could be attributed to people becoming more familiar with the system and able to enter them themselves. And then as you go down to garbage and recycling, those have actually gone down. So some good news for us in that area. So we're going to be sitting down with Public Works and Bylaw and going through whatever's still open for year-end and analyze. You know, some of these aren't just related to weather, and if we've had an increase, we'll look at them and dissect what we've done and what we can do better, and then report back to council.
Any questions?
Just more of a comment. Councillor Kleber and myself will remember when we started this project, I guess, in the last term, where, you know, it was our staff that put it together. To see it evolve up to this now, where, you know, we're going right into details. We've added more columns into the, you know, breakdowns and that kind of stuff. So it's good to see that we're getting this, and then you guys are going back to actually seeing where it can be fixed to make the numbers lower every time, so.
And we welcome feedback if there's more specific areas that council is looking for, or if you feel this report isn't giving you enough description and you need something else. We're, you know, just give me a call or send me an email or Karen, and we can discuss that, that, you know, another column and to help you with reporting. The other thing that Request for Services does is it tells us when, you know, if we're looking to move staff around or increase staff or resources, we're able to say, to actually give you some data. So I know we're talking, we're coming to budget, and we're looking for a Public Works operator increase. And, you know, that may help us solve some problems where we know the amount of of Request for Services we have in Public Works.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. So that's it, so next is... Is that, are you from Landmark?
Hi, but I'm with the guys from that one.
Oh, you are, okay. Well, then there's numbers.
If you go down to five point one?
Five point one? Oh, Red River Basin?
So that's just, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
That's, this is data from the Red River Basin, so there's, there's two candidates running for the north region. And it's a Sandra Strang or Chris Mendor, and there's some voting information to go along with that.
Voting deadline is when?
Voting will take place at the conference, seventeenth to nineteenth. Well, I can give you some feedback, there are two very, both are very strong candidates. So it's, it's good to see them step up. Oh, I thought that's on the...
Sure, want to take a recess?
Ten-minute recess?
Yeah. Take a ten-minute recess? So is everyone here from your delegation, or? So is everyone here from your delegation or? Do you want to start now or?
Sure, whatever, whatever works for council.
Yes, 6 o'clock, so.
Yeah, just come to the, yep.
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to present to you today, Happy New Year. I think I've met almost all of you aside from the Council of Actican, so nice to see you all again. My name is Andre Friesen. I'm joined by the property owner, Mr. Ken Cranwell, and Robert Prestupa, that's part of the project team. So we've been working on this project for about four and a half years now. Obviously, there's been lots of stuff going on with COVID, but we wanted to bring you up to speed on what we're, what we're thinking. If you have any feedback, comments, questions, we'd be happy to answer those for you tonight. So again, my name is Andre Friesen. I'm a planner with Landmark Planning and Design. We specialize in land use planning, so creating policy documents like development plans, secondary plans, zoning bylaws. We also undertake development applications, landscape architecture in-house, and then one of our specialties is public engagement. So we do a lot of public engagement related to all of our projects, as we did with this one. Donovan Taves, he's the fellow on the right side there, at least in my view. The follicle challenged individual on our partner squad there. He's part of the project team and he wanted to send his regrets, but he, he'll definitely be involved as well. Next slide. So we're here to discuss 3828 Main Street. The property is 5.87 acres in size, currently vacant. It's just down the road here, just past Candle Co., the antique store. Next slide, thank you. So in terms of planning policy, this property is designated as a settlement center policy area in the Red River Planning District Development Plan. And that would allow for development applications to be made, subject to council's approval. If we flip to the next slide, kind of zeroing, zeroing in on the middle church area. This area is designated as a mixed use neighborhood policy area, again, providing policy guidance for what the site could accommodate. And similar to what we're going to be proposing, it's a, a mixed up residential and commercial uses. Next slide, thank you. Property is currently zoned RR Grill Residential. I would consider this to be more of a holding zone right now. This area is serviced with municipal sewer and water. Because of that, the property won't be developed as a rural residential property because there are services in place. It won't be unserviced development on the, on the site. Next slide. So in terms of our overall proposal, it would be to rezone the property from RR Grill Residential to the CN Commercial Mixed Use Zone. That's a newer zone that's been included in your zoning bylaw that allows for that mix of uses that we're looking for. Next slide. And yeah, I just wanted to go through some of the representative projects, just to show you some imagery of how this could look if and when implemented. So on the, the north and the western portions of the site, we're proposing 55 plus residential. And then on the frontage portion of the site, a neighborhood scale commercial. If we flip to the next slide, I'm going to start off by going through some information related to this neighborhood scale commercial. So flip to the next slide again there too. So as a representative project, we've chosen 314 Henderson Highway. This is actually immediately east, just across the river from the site. We chose it because it would provide a very similar offering, offering for West St. Paul residents. One, one story, professional services offerings, doctors' offices, chiropractors, dental, pharmacy, those type of professional uses. That could be, could be implemented there. It's something that doesn't currently exist within the Middle Church Center. So it could be a benefit to, to all the residents within this area. Next slide, that's another view of this building. We think it's a really nice, nice development, so that's why we wanted to show it.
Yes, is this, you guys did this development?
We, we didn't, but it's something that we'd wanted to look similar to that in terms of how it's, the look and feel. Next slide. This is another one actually in East St. Paul. This one would actually be similar in terms of scale in that this site is roughly one acre in size. And this is, this is another one that's just across the river, same type of professional services that can be offered. That's something that the development proponent would want to look, look at doing on the, on the front portion of the site. So now to the back portion of the site for the 55 plus residential. If we flip over to the next slide, thank you. The representative project would be 451 Edison Avenue in Winnipeg. And the reason we chose this one is that it was done by Progressive Real Estate. And it's anticipated that they would be a partner on this project as well. So we're actually showing you some of the work that can be done here. Next slide. So this is a high quality multifamily residential development. This is the lobby. You can see high quality finishes, a really nice green roll that's in there. Next slide, just going through the features here of this building, shared common areas. The people living there can invite family down, they can host parties, different events. So there's that shared space, games room, that's another, another feature of the development. The next one, I believe is large balconies. From that site, we actually get some really, really nice views of West St. Paul, the river, unimpeded views to the west as well. I believe the next slide is a fitness center that has great views, the way it was set up there, overlooking the entire development. And the last one that's really important this time of year for a lot of people would be the indoor parking that would be heated. Be on the first floor of the structure. Just a really nice thing to have, especially in our climate. And it's an offering that West St. Paul currently doesn't have, to my understanding. Next slide, please. So why is this, a project like this important to West St. Paul and their residents? If we take a look at current census information, we can see that over 2,000 of your residents are 55 plus right now. So there's a, there's a chance, probably a high chance, that at some point in time, they're going to be looking for a bit of a different living arrangement. What we're proposing doesn't currently exist right now. And if we flip to the next slide here, we can see that 90% of your housing stock right now is single detached. That's the lay of the land, but if people are looking to downsize or looking for a different living arrangement, allowing them to age in place, stay in the community. This would provide a very nice option for people that want to stay, reside here and don't want to have to move, but are looking for something different. Where they, they do have all those features that they have, but all, all in one area. Next slide. Just for council's information, a couple of years back, we did hold a public open house at the Senova Center. It was attended by about 25 residents, had a lot of good feedback from them, a lot of good conversation, a lot of good exit surveys, talking about what they prefer to see on the site. And comments about how they'd like to see 55 plus residential there. That was one of the types of multifamily that they, they said they would be comfortable with. And since making that presentation, I've actually gotten calls and who knows from, from your residents asking when this project is going to happen because they are looking for, for something different. We have done a lot of work already with Red River Planning, managed up the transportation and infrastructure. They do have a service road planned for this side of Main Street that we've incorporated into our design. And we'll have to, have to incorporate in terms of how anything can be constructed there. And the, the image there shows a really nice article that they published in the Selkirk Record about the open house, very positive. So just wanted to bring that to, to council's attention as well. Next slide, so in terms of next steps, we're here to get any, any feedback that you may have for us. Obviously, review it with the project team with the goal of proceeding with the formal application of Red River Planning to make that rezoning application. Like I said, we've been working on this for about four and a half years now. I think we've got a really good, a really good concept and want to move forward with it. And that would involve making, making an application. So before doing that and getting into the formal process, we just wanted to let you know that we're still working on this, bring it to your attention, get it on the radar again. And yeah, that's, that's basically the intent of what we're here. We like to keep you in the loop. We like to keep your residents in the loop, no surprises. So thank you very much for the opportunity to present.
As we're back in, of course.
Yeah, well, thank you very much for coming forward and thank you to your team, the developers for coming forward. I wish more developers would do this at the city, had done this at the city of Winnipeg when I was there. But so applaud you guys for doing that. I think it's a good development. I want to ask you a couple of questions. Number one is, are you going to be contemplating a landscaping plan to include some trees and other things like that, you know? And then secondly, what is your egress? Is that going to be like sort of mirrored with West Acres? And is there going to be a plan for traffic signalization?
Yeah, great question. So there would be a landscape plan. I believe as part of that zone, we'd have to submit one anyway. We want it to be a high quality development. We want it to fit in with the local context and also to provide some buffering from the adjacent use. That was one of the things that the neighbor brought up. He didn't want to see snow blowing into his yards, whether it's fencing, trees, shrubs, something that would kind of create a bit of a split and a buffer between those yards. In terms of access and egress, it would align. That's, that's where Manitoba Transportation and Infrastructure would allow the access points. So we've already reviewed that with them. And as mentioned, they do have a service road proposal for that area. It's changed several times. There's been minor tweaks to it over the years. So I don't know if we're, we're up for another tweak. I will be getting in contact with them again, but it actually extends north past this property. And the rationale is, I believe there's, well, there was a business further north there and they wanted to make sure that everything would come in and then align with that, that access point that you're talking about. So that has already been contemplated and we actually lose area on the front for that to go in.
Okay, and just as a follow-up, is there going to be traffic signalization?
It's my understanding that not, it wouldn't occur here. MTI does have a plan for Minnehaha and reconfiguring the access onto Main Street for Minnehaha. And that's where the signalization was proposed based on several traffic studies. I believe the last one was completed by StanTech.
Okay, cute.
Thanks for this again. I was, I was here for the first part of this, so I just have some questions. In the 55 plus units, how many units are you looking at per building?
So that would have to, we'd have to drill into that a little bit, probably around 100 units, maybe more. It all depends on zoning regulation. We're only allowed 50% site coverage with this new zone. So basically, once the commercial is on there, the residual portion, we have to figure out what you can accommodate. We can go up 45 feet as per the zone. Again, first floor of the parking, so basically it comes down to the size of the unit and how many can fit on there. But that's kind of what we're estimating. It could be more. I think initially we had said roughly 90, I think. This new zone does allow some additional opportunities, but we're constrained by this, the size of the site and that will shape how many units would be in there.
Okay, next question. Are you looking at it as a condo or like a rental or like rental or purchase?
Rental, life lease. That would, that would likely be the, am I getting that right?
Well, that or we can still look at the condos as well. That's all up in the air right now, whether we're going to do the life lease or whether they're going to do the condos on it, so.
So condos would mean purchasing?
Yes, condos would mean purchaser, purchaser.
Life lease is purchasing.
Yeah, it's purchase as well. It's just it's a different format and it's more affordable for people not having to put out so much capital.
Okay, we got a few more. On the retail commercial, whatever you want to call it, where you're, you're showing the building from East St. Paul. How do you dictate what would be put into that building? How can you say it could be doctor's offices, that kind of stuff, but how can the R and control that?
R and probably can't control that, but we could, we could probably put some sort of an agreement together that would dictate it would be a professional center geared towards. What we're looking at doing is we're looking to talk to some doctors, which we have already. A walk-in, medical walk-in clinic is something that I think would be great here. Dental offices, physiotherapy office, you know, and we could move down the line from there. I'm thinking that because of the proximity to the St. Andrews Airport, it'd be a great dialysis center as well for some that are coming in from the north and not having to go through the hospital system. So we would, you know, look at the percentage there as well. And the, the, the size of the building would be dictated by, because there's a lot of land there. There's actually almost six acres of land, right? So we're totally under utilizing the, the land with, I think originally we talked about two 44 unit buildings. But then the costs of everything are going up and interest rates are going up, everything else. So a few more units would be more in line with making sure that it's a viable project, right? But more, more importantly, we've got to focus on, but like I'm 64 now, be 65 this year. And we're all getting to that point where we're going for blood books, you know, we're going for doctor's appointments and things like that. So we think that there is a, a need for that specifically out here. And there's a couple of doctors and dentists from walk-in clinics in the area that we've spoken to over a couple of years. But we can't give anybody any timeframes for expansion for their facility, you know, unless we have one for them to go into. And I realize there's going to be a whole bunch of new development out beside the rec center in, in the old McGary development out that way. But this will be different, like there's more geared shopping, this is more professional center. And I think it's important, I, I think it's important that we call it a professional center. And then that way we would tie it into uses for, for that as well. But we, me, I'm a part, senior partner at Century 21 backman and associates, I've been there 37 years. And we've all seen all the changes in real estate. So at this stage of the game, we want to leave a footprint that's going to be a beautiful facility. Number one, it's got to be win-win for both parties, otherwise it doesn't work, right? So we need to go to the community, get the community support, which we've done in the past and it's worked quite well. And, and then I think if we have a professional center to service the people in the buildings, that'd be nice. And I think that's where my role comes in as a Realtor, we go and select the people.
Couple more things here on that main floor parking. So your concept with that, take care of 50% of the parking, 75% of the parking? I'm trying to think of 100 units per building. What are you going to be able to put inside and how much space is going to be for the parking and visitors, that kind of stuff?
So, so last go around, when we did design those two 44 foot structures, I believe there was one squat per dwelling within the structures. But there is also other circus parking, guest parking provided on the site as well. And the way we designed the site or like we will design the site is that would be at the back portion of the site. And we want to maintain a rail setback of 100 feet. That's a good area for a parking lot. It keeps the front nice, clean, vehicles parked up there and then the back would be used for parking.
And one final question, I'm guessing through the professional, it's elevators, there'd be elevator in the, in the building.
For sure.
Definitely, yeah.
And that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I've got some questions. I like the look of your professional center. My question for you is, are you maintaining ownership of the provincial center and leasing it out?
The group, the group that we're working with will maintain ownership, yes.
Okay.
That would be, what's going to have to happen here? If, if you go condos on this, then we've almost got to look at a couple of different scenarios, how we can do this. We do life lease, it can be, it can be owned entirely with the ownership group, as it still can be if it went into condos. But we have to sort of do another dividing line, so do another subdivision, probably.
What about the commercial aspect?
The commercial aspect of the people that, well, we could do it a number of different ways. But rental is the rental income from the professional centers, one way of doing it. We've done commercial condos very successfully, O'Druff McGilvery, McCurry and McGilvery. I was one of the first ones to do a professional center in there. That turned into the, it was done by the Powers Realty Group, Barry Shankro and Robin Lee from Precon Builders. And we took, basically took a 10 acre site and we put in, we kept four acres, did 68,000 square foot buildings. And we leased all those out and then the ownership group kept that portfolio and they had 68,000 square feet of income coming in. We did 10 year leases, it was very successful. The balance of the project, we sold lots off. Precon as a partner kept a piece of property. And then Arceus to Homes bought a piece, they did a, about a 28,000 square foot CRU with their own facility in there. And then Darryl from Durango bought a little building, he did the same. And then we did another professional center in there that was only, it was small, it was like six units, maybe 20,000 square feet. And that one, we sold off as individual commercial condos. And we did another one in South Landing and that was very successful too. They sold out. What that does is it gives the IE, it's a good question because the doctors, they want a piece of the action too, right? So if we come in there and say, okay, we'll, we'll look at selling you your unit, so you need 8,000 square feet or 4,000 square feet. We can sell you off that unit or we can lease it to you. If we did a strata titled commercial condo, we could still retain ownership of each of those units and rent those out to those professionals with an option to buy them as well. We've done that, you know, doctors are pretty well healed and dentists and that, so they can usually afford to buy them. But not every, you know, the young guy coming up the ladder, he's got to, you know, choose, cut a little bit more and get there, right?
Okay, thanks for answering that because I wanted to know whether or not you could, I mean, keep control of the professional center. So sometimes we get developers that come in and show us the plan of the professional center. But then something completely different goes up. But then something completely different goes up or we get commercial, retail. And so I like the plan of the professional center because it's something we don't have in West St. Paul at this time.
And I agree with you, but I, and I think that you touched on a point there. The mix of use between the retail sector, and you'll see it all over the place, particularly if you drive up, you know, say Main Street, and you'll see some of those, those little malls, they're full of all kinds of stuff that don't even add up to be together, you know? So, and a lot of the small mom and pop operations, we're not interested in that at this stage of the game. We want secure, good people that are going to make the project what it's going to be. It'll be fifty million dollars here, minimum.
Yeah, yeah, looks good. I was going to ask you how you were going to get by the fifty-five plus because Human Rights is always stepping in there and saying, you can't, you can't designate this. But if you're going for a life lease, then you can, you can designate. Because I know my mother-in-law had a life lease, so I'm really familiar with it. And you would maintain then some sort of ownership, like an HOA type thing there?
Well, there's policies in place that we would have to put in and are pretty tight, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
And whether it's going to be life lease, whether it's going to be condos, it doesn't matter. The developers still have to stay on a board. If there's a condo board, Kenny will be able to touch on that, your president of the condo board in your building. But my understanding is, is that, you know, there's the ownership group in the past when we've done the commercial condos, we still, the developer that I worked with, that was Claude Clucci from Ambassador Mechanical, he would maintain ownership and of a couple of the units himself and then put people in and then he'd take his money out slowly over a five-year period or something.
Okay.
Okay, so there's different ways to do it, but he has to sit on the board as the developer as well in the beginning and then after it can change.
The reason I'm asking is, we have a lot of rental that has gone up. And we, as a council, we want to see ownership.
Yeah, okay.
Because we have rental across the street, you probably saw the rental across the street.
It's an eyesore.
And with that comes different challenges, right?
For sure.
But when you have people that are invested in their unit and their building, it's a different mentality altogether.
Absolutely.
And you said that you spoke to the neighbors, so you spoke to Candle Factory and who's the other neighbor on the other side?
That's the hydro corridor.
Yeah, but the hydro corridor is on one section, but, and that is Candle Factory there. And then on, towards the north there, there's a driveway there. So is that a business there or is that a?
It's a house, isn't it back there?
I think it's a house. I think I know whose house that is.
It's a little blue house or something.
Wait, wait in the back there?
Just, just north of the hydralane.
Yeah.
No, haven't, haven't engaged them. We were dealing with the fellow from Candle Co.
Okay.
Definitely reached out to him numerous times and he did attend the open house as well.
Yeah. So will you be doing another open house? Because this is a completely different concept than what was originally done. Originally, it was, I think, three apartment blocks?
Yeah, it was two.
As a, or two?
Yeah, there was a two.
Right, and it was a different concept altogether? This is a completely different, you moved away from that? Gone to ownership, gone to more commercial? Is that something that you would be willing to share with the public?
Oh, I don't think, we have nothing to.
You have nothing to hide.
Nothing to hide.
Yeah, okay.
We would be happy to do that. It's more, more money, I guess, in cost to do that public consultation again, but that's just money, so.
I don't know, I don't know if I'm looking for public consultation rather than public information.
Okay, so.
Say, this is our concept.
I would refer that question to Andre because we hire him to get it all together and we will do what we need to do.
Okay, sounds great. Fourth, and I'm going to direct this to our CAO. The, because you've got an apartment block going up there, are you wanting, are you going to be using a well for the water or are you going to be using water lines?
I'll touch base on that. I've been involved in this land for fifteen years minimum with the Jewish Foundation.
Okay.
And the RM actually did a deal with the Jewish Foundation for a ten acre piece on the west side of the tracks. And in conjunction with that deal, this property, because the property runs straight west to Highway Eight.
Yeah.
And this six acre piece of property was to be granted from the RM sewer and water connection. And that is on documents, I don't know, Brent Almich, I have spoken with that in the past. And that is definitely on record.
Great, good, thank you.
So that's, that's our answer. We're going to have municipal sewer and water there.
Okay, great. All right, thanks, you've answered my questions.
Yeah, I still have a quick follow-up question. The square footage of the life leases, what's approximate footprint?
You know what?
Approximate.
Depending on the type of construction we go. I'm thinking, number one, you have to have concrete floors, right? So, and whether it's going to be steel, wood frame combination, concrete prefab, I mean, there's different methods that are going to go. But the square footage is, would range probably from about seven fifty square feet upwards to possibly fourteen hundred. Nothing too outrageous, but certainly it's got to be fourteen, we could go possibly sixteen hundred on some units. But you have to have a stop point as to like, we can't go into a building like Kenny is and somebody's got a two thousand, twenty-five hundred square foot floor plate. We're not in that market here. And the cost of construction and carrying costs today and land cost today and everything else, it's huge. The numbers are changing every day.
On the campaign trailer, ran into a few residents, probably a handful or so, that were interested in aging in place. And they were asking about, you know, are there going to be developments for, you know, people who want to age in place? And this is good news.
This is, this has been our intention from the beginning when we bought this, when Kenny bought the property, not myself. I'm not an owner in this, let's just clarify that. I'm just, I'm a Realtor at Century Twenty-One Backman and a partner. I do land acquisitions and dispositions and I do it all over the province. And I do all the stuff for that over Mayatee Federation and we'll be back on other stuff in a few years on that, but right now.
Okay, thanks for the heads up.
But on this, this land was always our intention to do this because we saw the void in the market. And then all the housing, of course, is, over the last five years has gone crazy.
Good, thank you.
And one more thing, I think when, when the West lands, west of the tracks and that part, and you know, we're looking probably ten, twelve years away before you'll see a development on that part and for major housing development with all the landowners, including the family from Alberta. I would see a beautiful opportunity there for residential developments with, you know, hundred-foot lots, you know? And have, you know, really nice, bigger yards and stuff because there's all that land in there, there's a couple thousand acres in there, so.
You're speaking our language now.
I mean, look at, Pritchard Farm is a classic example. It defers to a beautiful development, you know? And they went to, some of them are sixty-eight, but you know, most of them are, you know, say sixty-five feet to a hundred feet lots. And it's so nice to drive through there, right? I think that's going to be a key area of development in the future, years down the road, of course, but that's what I would vision there.
Sounds good.
I like what you're saying.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? Are there any others at all?
No, that's it. We just wanted to bring you up to speed and there's a couple, new mayor, new councillor. Council Campbell's back, so.
See you again. Recycle.
Yeah, we just wanted to bring you up to speed and yeah, we really appreciate the feedback and fitting this in in the new year here and that will go through what you said and bring you an application.
And I think the key for us, if I could just finish with this, is that, you know, getting the rezoning of the mixed-use commercial, then we can go hard on our plans because, you know, we're in Limbo, that's what we're looking for. The subdivisions can be completed. Andre, where's the subdivision at?
The subdivision is at registration at Land Tows right now. So just, just for background information, as mentioned, the parcel has frontage on Main and then it actually extends over the tracks all the way to McPhillips. The first thing we undertook was separating the six acres off the fronts of Main Street from the balance of the parcel. It's one of those historic lots that was created. And the way the planning act reads is that a rail line does not create a breaching continuity of the parcel, even though it a hundred percent does. So just one of those weirds.
We split that last term.
That's right, yeah, yeah. So that one, it's at Land Tows right now, being registered. But that one was a thoroughly straightforward subdivision in that nothing actually changes. It's just how it's described in the title, basically, that's all it.
So Kenny, when you build that apartment block, make sure those floors are soundproofed.
Oh, that's for sure. I live in a condo and that was the very first thing that we made sure we had concrete floors. So we don't hear anything.
You've got to do it, you need sound transmissions.
Yeah, especially on top of you.
The whole experience is different.
Yeah, when you have good, well-constructed.
Yeah.
Excellent, sounds really good.
Thank you.
Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you.
We look forward to working with you.
Good luck, good day, Senator.
Have a good day.
Thanks.
Have a good evening. Yep.
Thanks, Brendan.
Bravo, thank you.
Next is a question period. Got any question?
Question period, do you want a question?
Oh, no, I do, but it can wait.
Say your name.
Jerry Galenkey, three five four Garden Drive, West St. Paul. My question is about the water and the sewer on this property, this project that's coming up. Where are they going to get the water from? I mean, we're at capacity now. So is the municipality going to pay for a new cedrin so they can bring the water to this project? Because my understanding is way over, the amount of service from the cedrin that we have is over capacity already. So I'm just wondering if, you know, if we have a hundred homes or a hundred units there, where are we getting the water from? Somebody can answer that one for me.
We just approved the new cell on our water plant, which we got a three point something million dollar grant from Water Services, which now doubles the size of the cell.
All right, the question I'm asking because I didn't know you just got a grant for a new cell, so that was one thing.
Well, it's previous, previous term.
Previous term?
Yeah.
Well, I didn't know about it, so I still ask a question. Yeah. Another thing is about the parking.
Can I interrupt for a second? Could we have the CAO answer that? I would like this, Mr., I don't remember his name here, from Backman. He had said that there was an agreement on the place already for sewer and water for them? Is that?
Yeah, I don't remember exactly like that.
Okay.
I'll put it that way. There was no water line going by there when, historically, what's happened is we, the Jewish Foundation owned the land and I negotiated with the, for over a year, with the Jewish Foundation through Barry Shankaro to purchase ten acres on the, the west side of the track. And that's where we were going to build our eighteen million dollar sewer plant for fifteen hundred ERUs. We managed to do the deal with the city of Winnipeg, so the land still sits there. But when this property was purchased, there was no water line running by it, so we wouldn't have.
Would have done that.
Done that.
So it would be, have to be a decision.
Yeah.
We, yeah, on that, whether or not we have ER units for that. Okay, thank you.
Second thing about the parking on this, I mean, we don't know how many units and because the costs are going up and interest is going up and it's going to be going up some more, we have to add more units. So, but we're not adding more land, you understand what I'm saying? And we had the police here tonight telling about the troubles of parking on Main Street already. So, you know, this is something that councils should be very aware of, that at least there is the parking. And because we, we're going to have a lot of people complaining. And the thing about the concepts, bringing pictures and showing the concepts, I mean, I understand that, but zoning is zoning. If, if, it's just the same concept, the same, the building is for storage. But if the zoning is there, you put whatever that zoning allows. So, you know, developers, they like to give you what you want to hear. So, and I agree that, that, you know, doctors' buildings and services for dentists and that, it's needed. But is it certain? It's not certain right now, it's all talk, right? And we've heard that for years. So council, I think, has the last on the, on the development agreement. But we're asked to pass the amendment to the zoning now, before that comes. Understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
That's my questions.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, just, just to remind council that on the zoning bylaw, that we increased the parking per unit. And I believe it was at one point seven five previously. And now it's two spots per, per home, so per apartment or per condo. So the, the RM has seen that and addressed it and I believe that's a twelve percent increase in parking. So one point seven five, and now it's for every unit in that apartment or condo, is two spots required.
Counsel Bresetti?
Counsel, isn't there a number for commercial, professional, whatever, retail building? Isn't there a percentage per square footage that they have to have around that building for parking also for?
Yes.
For that too, so.
They mentioned fifty percent coverage, is that building coverage?
I'm not sure on that.
Or cannot?
I'd have to look. That sounds about right.
So fifty percent of it would be open parking spot, which basically?
Yeah, as long as, I mean, you know.
Time to ask the questions at the beginning, but after it happened. Thank you very much for your time.
I also brought that up, asking about the parking, if it was all underground or outside.
Yes, it is on the radar because we are dealing with, as the RCMP said, people parking on the ancient. But we have two cars per unit. If we know there's no bus service and we're two, three, four cars. So if you have a family with two people working and perhaps a student going to university, we have three cars. And this is a reality. I mean, it's good to see we went up from one point eight to two, but in reality, if you drive by, you see four, six cars in a, in a parking lot or in a, in a driveway of a house. So that's the reality. I mean, it doesn't matter what the, what the two, you know?
Well, the demographic, if it's a fifty-five life lease, that's probably, they're not probably going to have a student going to university.
Well, they're just moving back home, which is.
That's possible, yes.
I think though that, that, you know, we have to have conversations.
Yeah, it's on the radar.
And decide how we can denote even a fifty-five plus or life lease or condo.
Spending fifty million dollars into the municipality is great.
Yeah.
As long as it's what we get, what we want.
Exactly. And I'm full agreement with you.
You know, the zoning and then the next thing you know, we have a cannabis store because it's allowed, right? I mean.
A cannabis store is not allowed in our, we don't allow any retail cannabis in our RM right now.
Well, I'm just saying because it's a retail place, right? I mean.
It's not retail, it's commercial.
What would the zoning be, a commercial?
It's the new zoning, CM, right? Yeah.
Is that CM?
I don't know what that means.
Yeah, cool look. There's a new zoning, which is like a commercial plus residential combined.
Okay.
Yeah.
But maybe.
I think that was passed in the fall last year. Yeah.
Maybe we should have a zoning that says professional building, you know?
I think this is kind of like that, so if you look at it, you'll see the, you'll see the pictures and the pictures kind of denote that. It's like you, you have a, a building and you have commercial underneath, like offices or Starbucks or whatever, and then you have your residences. and then you have your residences on top. Very similar to Vancouver.
They did developments all over Winnipeg and Manitoba, they're very skilled, and they know the rules. So we should be able to get what we're promised.
Yeah.
And showing a Cadillac, we don't want a Chevy.
Absolutely, I agree with you.
Thank you much, thank you very much.
Hundred percent.
Got any questions in the way? Okay, so then I guess next on the agenda is to go in camera. That concludes our meeting, so we'll now adjourn till seven-thirty.